Thank you, everyone, for joining. I will now call to order the regular meeting of the Reno City Planning Commission. Today is Wednesday, October 2, 2024, and we are at the City of Reno Council Chamber. We'll begin with Agenda Item 1, the Pledge of Allegiance. Commissioner Rohrmeyer, will you please lead us?
For the United States of America, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Closing Agenda Item 1 and moving to Agenda Item 2. Michelle, or sorry, Secretary, please get a roll call.
Harris Armstrong.
Here.
Carrie Rohmeyer.
Here.
Manny Becerra.
Here.
Christina Del VR.
Here.
J.D. Draculich.
Here.
Alex Velto.
Here.
Sylvia Villanueva.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Closing Item 2 and moving to Item 3, Public Comment. This item is for public comment on any action item or any general public comment.
Members of the public may call into the meeting to provide public comment by using the Zoom link provided on the agenda, specifically, H T T P S colon forward slash forward slash links dot Reno dot gov forward slash capital P, capital C, one, zero, dash, zero, two, dash, two, four. It should be noted for those in the audience that comments are to be addressed to the Planning Commission as a whole. Comments heard under this item will be limited to three minutes per person and may pertain to matters both on and off the Planning Commission agenda. Please note that the Planning Commission may not take action upon any matter not agendized for possible action on today's agenda. When you are called on for public comment, please state your name for the record and begin speaking. The timer will begin when you say your name, and you will be afforded three minutes. If you are an attendee in the Zoom meeting and would like to make public comment at this time, please raise your hand. Lastly, while in this room, please be respectful. Mornings will be issued by the presiding officer if there is disruptive behavior, and you will be asked to leave chambers if the behavior continues. We do not have any request-to-speak forms, voicemails, or correspondence for this item.
Thank you. Do we have anyone wishing to speak on Zoom?
We do not have anyone on Zoom.
Okay, great. Is there anyone in the chambers wishing to speak under General Public Comment? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and close Item 3 and move to Item 4 for Possible Action: Approval of the Minutes from the Regular City of Reno Planning Commission Meeting on September 18, 2024. Are there any questions, abstentions, or discussion items from the Commission? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
I'm sorry. For Villanueva, I do have to abstain. I was not.
Understood. Thank you, Commissioner Villanueva.
Commissioner Velto, same abstention.
Understood. Thank you, Commissioner Velto.
Commissioner Rohrmeyer, make a motion to approve.
We have a motion.
Commissioner Del VR, a second, the motion?
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Aye.
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 Motion passes unanimously. We will close Item 4 and move to Item 5, Presentations and Discussion. We'll start with Item 5.1, Council Liaison Update.
Hello, Councilmember Ebert, for the record. I'm the City Council Liaison to the Planning Commission. Just some high-level updates about City Council Agenda for you all. So, some of the priorities are affordable housing and availability. There's been, as everyone knows, a significant population increase over the last decade and increased demand for housing. So, the council is looking to expand affordable housing options through incentivized affordable housing developments and allocating funds towards low-income housing projects and also promoting density with infill projects. We're also looking into zoning and land use conflicts, updates to Title 18, and just changes to reflect the city's needs where things are incompatible regarding land uses and residential conflicts, things like that. Also, updating regulations to address protection of neighborhoods when new development comes in, and also updating regulations to address negative impacts of industrial uses when located next to residential development regarding noise lights and hours of operation. We're also working to increase communication with our partners at NDOT RTC and Washoe County to communicate better with changes to our infrastructure and things like timing with our traffic signals and coordinating projects so that we minimize the impact to commuters and things like that. So, that is kind of our high-level council priorities at this time. Oh, also, I wanted to share, I did meet with some planning commissioners, and I will be working with the city manager and other council members to try and put together some more comprehensive plan for the city of Reno. It's something that has been expressed by other council members and Planning Commission members that, you know, we have a master plan that's a really thick document that's kind of more high-level, and there's been a lot of interest in coming up with more of a more detailed plan with the kind of development we'd like to see in the city of Reno. So, that's something we're going to be looking into. How do we make that happen? So, just at the beginning stages of that, but just wanted to let everyone know. So, thank you.
Thank you so much, Councilwoman. We will now close Item 5.1 and open Item 5.2, Presentation from the Reno Sparks Indian Colony.
Good evening, Planning Commission. Thank you so much for inviting us to give you a brief presentation tonight. My name is Candace Dole, Director of the Planning and Community Development Department at the Reno Sparks Indian Colony. So, tonight, we thought we'd just give you a brief overview. Where are we in the city? And where are our development priorities over the next couple of years? And some of the challenges that we have in terms of planning, long-range, as well as current planning?
Candace, can we have you speak a little closer to the mic or pull that closer to you?
Sure.
Thank you.
Is that better? Thank you.
Thank you.
So, tonight, what I'd like to do for the Planning Commission members is talk about the location and growth of the Reno Sparks Indian Colony, talk about some of the current conditions on the colony and our surrounding areas, give you a preview about our 2040 Comprehensive Plan, and then some of the development priorities for 2025. As some of you may know, the Reno Sparks Indian Colony was established in 1917. It was established with a purchase by the federal government. We started basically on Reservation Road with about 19 acres. And basically, until about the 1970s, 1980s, the Reno Sparks Indian Colony only had 28 acres, very small in comparison to other tribal governments that you would know about, such as Pyramid Lake. In about 1986, we expanded with a significant purchase in Hungry Valley, that was about 1,900 acres. And then, in about 2016, with the Native Nevada Nations Act, we picked up about another 14,000 acres. And that was a huge increase. And so, now, today, the Reno Sparks Indian Colony has 15,609 acres, with most of it in Hungry Valley, unincorporated Washoe County. We have a total enrolled membership of 1,342, and we have about 350 employees. The map on your left basically shows where the original colony was in 1917, and then we picked up some property, additional property, north of Second, where we have our residential properties along Colony Road. So, as you can see, this picture is today. Back in 1970, this was all agricultural area. There were farm fields, and it was considered sort of an ideal location in terms of tribal members being able to go either to City of Sparks or City of Reno. This was all, of course, unincorporated Washoe County. So, again, 1917 and 1928, basically, nothing changed for about 50 years, and then the colony started purchasing properties in the 1970s and 1980s. If you look to your right, it's basically the same picture. Any of the parcels that you see that are bounded in orange, those are the parcels that are owned by the Reno Sparks Colony today. Now, I'm just showing the core area. We obviously have other parcels in Verdai, South Virginia, but just focusing now on the core colony establishment area. So, we started to pick up properties west of Golden Lane. Golden Lane is the city street, but east of that is our Reservation Road homes. And then, we started picking up properties north of Second. It's important to explain that there are basically two types of ownership. We can have the properties that are in trust, which means the federal government owns it on behalf of the Reno Sparks Indian Colony, tribal trust land. That's how we have our sovereignty in terms of independence from regulatory authority, whether it's building, taxation. But we also have parcels that we own in fee, fee simple. And just like any other property owner within the city of Reno, that fee parcel is subject to whoever the regulatory authority is. So, when we have those fee parcels, and we still have several of those in this area, we would still be calling on the city of Reno for code enforcement. We would be submitting building permits to the city of Reno for anything that's still owned in fee. In terms of some of the challenges that we have, as you probably are aware, the colony, when it was established, as I said, was primarily agricultural, unincorporated Washoe County. As time went on, you start to see uses surrounding us along Reservation Road, north of Second. This is the industrial zoning within the city of Reno. I don't know if any of this was created with Washoe County, but as some of you may know, we are a county island. So, all of the core area of the Reno Sparks Indian Colony was never annexed to the city of Reno. We are still within unincorporated Washoe County. Doesn't make sense, but that's the way it is today. But as you can see with the gray, that's all the industrial zoning that surrounds us. So, to the west, we have industrial zoning. The parcels that we've picked up, north of Colony Road, Sunshine Lane, those are all industrial. And then, of course, to the east, you'll see the ramps for the SBX project. In addition, we're bounded to the south by Mill Street, and obviously, to the north, the bisect of the East Second, which is a state highway. So, we have challenges when we want to develop, and we have that existing industrial zoning, which is really not going to change unless you have property owners coming into the city that want to change that industrial zoning. But the one thing I want to mention is that over time, as we purchased more properties in this area, particularly as we started to purchase properties along the Truckee River, what we have done is basically redevelop those properties to remove those industrial uses, particularly along the Truckee River. And the two great examples of that are the Tribal Health Center at 1715 Kunsli, which is sort of the white building right next to the river. That opened up in 2008. Again, those were all industrial parcels along the Truckee River. That's what was done at the time. And we started to redevelop those properties and remove the industrial uses, wood, storage, auto uses, all of that. And that was also with the parcels surrounding Tribal Health Center. With the Walmart purchase that we started in the 1990s, that was obviously industrial uses, as well as the State Resitution Center, which is a six-acre parcel just east of Walmart. Again, there was a lot of remediation that was going on in these parcels. And of course, we worked out remediation grant funding with the state of Nevada with the brownfields program. But it's taken a lot of work to redevelop those parcels when they've been so heavily industrial over this time period. And in terms of coordination and collaboration with City of Reno, of course, we intersect in so many different areas, whether it's transportation, whether it's regional transportation planning, whether it's the Truckee River. We've been very involved in the Truckee River Vision Plan because we see that as critically important, and we obviously are a stakeholder and really are sort of in the middle between Reno and Sparks. But some of the challenges are because we have the existing industrial parcels, existing zoning, existing industrial land uses. When things, when people come into the city for applications for site plan review, for conditional uses, the city has to deal with existing zoning, and we have to deal with the fact that we have residential homes next to industrial zoning. So, as Councilwoman Ebert was saying, the issues about existing industrial parcels that are zoned industrial, they obviously have existing rights, and we have our homes right next to those industrial parcels. So, we see that come up recently with the 100 Sunshine Lane. This was just administrative, but it's site plan review for storage of porta potties and right next to our homes on Colony Road. We see it with other land uses. So, that's a challenge we have. And of course, the best control that we can have is to purchase those properties. That would be the best way to start, as we've done with other parcels. But that's some of the challenges we have with our core area. I wanted to also mention that about two years ago, we started a new comprehensive plan for the Reno Sparks Indian Colony. The last time a comprehensive plan was done for the colony was the year 2000. So, we're about 20 years out to start the work on a new comprehensive plan. So, we started this in 2022, and this was really sort of a traditional comprehensive plan. We went out with a survey to the community members, our employees. We, you know, tried to find out what the issues were. We talked about transportation, public safety, recreation, access to the Truckee River. And we are sort of in the last stages. This is still in draft form. The tribal council has not adopted the comprehensive plan, but we did sort of our traditional elements. So, we've done land use, we've done transportation, we've done housing, because that's a critical need for our colony members. We don't have enough housing on the colony. Most people who are enrolled members have to live off colony, and that's a challenge for our colony members, as well as anybody dealing with the housing market in Reno today. So, this, looking on the screen right now, is a draft of the land use element of the 2040 Comprehensive Plan. And if you look, starting at the north along the Truckee River, to your right, you'll obviously see Walmart there. That would certainly stay tourist commercial. But you also see our existing Truckee River path. I don't know if many of you know that, but we were able to bring Walmart in due to a partnership that we had with the Truckee River Flood Management Authority and Walmart, where we all chipped in millions of dollars to build that flood wall and levee on the other side there. Many people don't even know the path is there, but it's great. There's landscaping there, and we're always doing improvements and working with our partners. Going across the interstate, you see that what we're showing for the Sunshine Lane parcels, again, we own all those parcels. I don't know if you can see it clearly enough, but all the ones that have colors in them, we're showing community facilities, which makes sense. We want to start having more of our government buildings next to the river, and what we hope is, next year, we're going to start planning for a new multipurpose justice center, which I'll get into in a minute. But you're seeing community facility as the land use, proposed land use, next to the Truckee River between Kitsky Lane and 580. You're also seeing proposed multifamily, again, to address the housing needs that we have for our colony members. Basically, no other change for the rest of the colony. You'll see our health center, which is in blue, going west of Kitsky Lane. And then, you'll also see that we have green along the river, and that's because, even though we have the existing path on the Walmart parcel, we have been working for, you know, almost seven, eight years now with Regional Transportation Commission to construct a shared-use path. So, where the path stops now at John Champion Park, and you have to go across the river in the footbridge, the design is to have a shared-use path, 10-foot path, that would allow people to continue on the south side of the river and go under Kitsky, under 580, connect to our Walmart property, and then actually continue on down to Grand Sierra Resort. So, it's about 80% design, and we hope that we can start moving this forward next year. So, those are some of the things that we're hoping with the comprehensive plan. Again, there's a great need to expand our community facilities. There's a great need to improve access to the Truckee River, to have amenities at the Truckee River, to make it safer for people to walk and enjoy the Truckee River, and of course, to have more ripper improvements along the Truckee River, new housing I talked about, and then the expansion of our Tribal Health Center. Our Health Center opened up in 2008, and it's already overcrowded. They need more space, and they need more parking, and hopefully, someday, we'll be able to expand further, whether east or west. We do own the parcel directly across the street of Drew, and we've been entertaining thoughts about possibly going to the city and asking for abandonment of right-of-way of Drew Street. It's a cul-de-sac, doesn't go anywhere, and we've talked to some of the traffic engineers about that. But again, that's the draft land use element. Again, it hasn't been adopted yet by tribal council, but just wanted to give you a sense of what we're looking at this year and the next 16 years. So, in terms of the development priorities for next year, 2025, the big news for us is that we've received almost $2 million from the Department of Justice to finally start constructing a multipurpose justice center. This is something that has been designed. We have great plans that were done many years ago, but we've never gotten a location for it. So, right now, the intent where you saw the blue, the community facility between Kitsky and 580, to Sunshine Lane, also formerly known as the Oxboro Site, that's where we would be developing a new justice center, basically to house our tribal police, our human services, and our tribal court. Right now, all three departments are in old and not very pleasant old manufactured buildings. So, it's time to move those departments out into a multipurpose justice center with more coordination, better design, better facilities for the employees, and a great location for our colony members. So, we're looking forward to start designing on that master plan for all the Sunshine Lane parcels, because, as you know, Sunshine Lane, it goes into a cul-de-sac, and we're not sure that that makes the most sense if we're going to be looking at government center, community centers, open space, recreation. So, we don't know if we want to look at changing the design of that. Again, we own all those parcels. We obviously do not have jurisdiction over Sunshine Lane as cul-de-sacs, but looking at all those options in terms of what's going to make sense, it's a very exciting time to be looking at that. I mentioned justice center facility master plan. Our six-acre parcel, this is the parcel that's just east of Walmart. So, we picked that up when there was a big swap with AB 299 many years ago, and again, this was where the State Resitution Center used to be located. We just, a swap, went through the state legislature. The State Resitution Center moved over to the southeast corner, that nice transitional housing building. We were involved in constructing that, and so now, we have the opportunity to develop that six-acre parcel. Likely, it's going to be some kind of commercial, tourist commercial use. The other big priority, again, is the Truckee River shared-use path. We have to get started on that. We have to have better management of the Truckee River along our parcels, and we have to make it more accessible to our colony members, as well as the general public. So, with that, those are some of our priorities. We have a lot of things that are going to be hitting the calendar in the next couple of months, and we're excited to finally have some more resources to start doing this master planning, as well as actually implementation, not only buildings, but also the comprehensive plan. So, that is where we are at the Reno Sparks Indian Colony, and again, I want to thank you, Planning Commission, for inviting us to give this short presentation. Thank you. Unless you have any questions.
Thank you. Yeah, we'll bring it back to the Commission. Does anyone have any questions? Commissioner Becerra?
Sure. Thank you so much for being here with us this evening. That was really insightful. One question I do have is, are there areas or particular projects that come to mind that you think we could be a better or more effective governing board to the RSI?
I think going forward, we're going to have more challenges along the Truckee River.
Okay.
As I said, we were very involved in the Truckee River Vision Plan, and it's how do we help to move forward the vision and the implementation of that Truckee River Vision Plan? One thing that, you know, we noticed is that when there are discretionary permits that are coming along, along the Truckee River corridor, we certainly want to take the opportunity, if we're being noticed, for discretionary permits, whether it's a major deviation, if there's opportunities to do more screening, more buffering of some of those uses that exist that are not compatible with the Truckee River Vision Plan, we would be advocating for that. And we did that last year in terms of the waste management facility. So, I think that's one thing. We're already coordinating on so many different ways with transportation planning, pedestrian safety, Vision Zero, obviously, the 2050 Transportation Plan. We're heavily involved with NDOT, so we're into lots of different areas, but I would say the Truckee River Vision Plan to, you know, help move that forward with all of our partners, including City of Reno.
Fantastic. And just to follow up there, Candace, you mentioned something about an abandonment of a road. Is that correct? Are you getting the support or help you need from the city to explore the possibilities there?
Right. And of course, we have not gotten a formal resolution, but I know our Tribal Health Center, which is right there, would be interested because since Drew doesn't really serve anyone except Reno Sparks Indian Colony, we own the properties on both sides of Drew and it's just a cul-de-sac. There is a storm, stormwater that goes underneath that road. We would not obviously impinge on that, but it would give us more control in that area. There's a lot of times where that cul-de-sac sort of invites activity that is not necessarily positive. So, we think that might be something that we would want to submit to the city for consideration if it's approved by a tribal council.
Okay, fantastic. Maybe our illustrious city staff manager, to my right, can assist you with that and others.
Great.
Any further questions in the Commission? Seeing none, we can move to discussion. Does anyone have an item for discussion? Commissioner Rohmeyer, please.
I just wanted to thank you for coming. I found this fascinating. You know, you can live in Reno for decades and not really understand the boundaries, parcels, and the relationship, and I learned a great deal. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Any further discussion from the Commission? Commissioner Villanueva?
I just want to echo Commissioner Rohmeyer's comments. Thank you for coming and speaking to us today.
Thank you, Commissioner. I'll go ahead and echo the same sentiment. Really appreciate your informative presentation and look forward to potentially collaborating in the future, however we can. Thank you. And before we close Item 5, Commissioner, sorry, Councilwoman Ebert, if I may call you back, I think I let you off the hook a little too early. I believe the Commission may have some questions or comments, so apologies for that.
Yeah.
So, bringing it back to the Commissions, do we have any questions? Commissioner Villanueva?
Hi, Councilwoman. Thanks for the update. I know recently that there was a vision plan or something was passed with regard to the river. Can you touch on that a little bit? Because I don't think we've gotten a presentation on that. I think at the last meeting, there was a presentation.
Yeah, yeah. So, we did get a, it was a river plan that included some parks and turning the area in front of the Believe sign into a green space and kind of activating a lot of the river space downtown, which, you know, I think that we want to do, but I'm not necessarily sure when we'll have the funding to do that. So, it's a plan that we've accepted, but not necessarily something we'll be able to do everything that's in there. I could bring kind of a presentation, more specifics on that, to the next Planning Commission meeting, but we're not going to be able to do all of what's in that plan.
Okay, thanks. We could probably just have one of the consulting companies that you guys use present the plan.
Yeah.
So, thanks.
Thank you. Any further questions from the Commission? Any discussion items from the Commission? Please.
This is Commissioner Del VR. Again, thank you so much for bringing this up. You and I have had conversations about, you know, the master plan, which is, you know, quite a bit old and, to your point, very, very thick. And I think that with the influx of the population that Reno has seen over the past decade, it's important to start looking a little more closely at some of these areas. So, I appreciate that the council is taking that into consideration, and hopefully, that will help a lot.
Yeah. Thank you.
Yeah, I just want to concur with that. I'm actually really excited to hear about that project. I think it'll be really helpful for us and look forward to just learning more about it and being helpful where we can. Any further discussion items? Okay. We can now close the item, and thank you again, Councilwoman, for your time.
Thank you.
We'll now move to Item 6, Public Hearings. Start with Item 6.1, LDC 24-00065, Virginia Village Self-Storage. This item has actually been postponed, so I don't believe we'll be having any public comment or hearing. I just wanted to disclose that it was postponed. So, that will actually close Item 6.2, or sorry, 6.1, and move to Item 6.2, LDC 24-00004, Starbucks Fire Creek Crossing. Any person who has chosen to provide Any person who has chosen to provide his or her public comment when a public hearing is heard will need to so indicate on a request to speak form provided to the secretary. Alternatively, you may provide your comment when item three public comment is heard at the beginning of the meeting. With that, we will take a presentation from staff.
Hello. Good evening. Members of the commission. For the record, my name is Leah Picati, and I am an associate planner with the City of Reno Development Services. This evening, I am presenting an application for a new Starbucks with a drive-through at Fire Creek Crossing. The subject property is located within the Fire Creek Crossing Shopping Center, which is on, essentially at the intersection of Kitsky and Redfield. Overall, the parcel is 16, I'm sorry, 17.65 acres, but the project site is only .91. And I'll show you exactly where that is here in just a second. The request that we're looking at today is a restaurant with a drive-through facility within 300 feet of a residentially zoned property. The building and the drive-through are existing, but here, you can see that the whole place is within the mixed-use zoning district, and it's right here on this corner where the Boston Market has been for the past 23 years. It did trigger residential adjacency, but it's pretty far away. Let's see here. So the residential adjacency is this MF30 parcel that even though the whole parcel is within 300 feet, the actual project site is about 1,250 feet from that residential zoning district. So you'll notice under our key issues, we looked at overall site design, traffic access and circulation, and public safety. So looking at the overall site design, this is an existing building with an existing drive-through. What the applicant is asking for is to expand that existing drive-through to allow for 10 cars behind the ordering kiosk and 17 cars total behind the payment window. Just to give you perspective, that's about double what code would generally require. And then the other thing that we've asked for here is that this intersection over here be striped and with arrows. So if we get a little closer to look at that, we're asking that they stripe that intersection to say, "Do not block there." We heard from some public comments saying that that was routinely blocked, and they asked that we remedy that. And so we're going to stripe that with a "do not block," and then we're going to add some arrows, defining that there are in fact two lanes here, and that one lane can go straight and one lane can go straight, or it can turn into the shopping center. On the board are the conditional use permit findings. The staff found that the location complies with RMC and the purpose of the zoning district. It is compatible because it is located within an existing shopping center. Public services and utilities are available. Again, it's an existing building. And the characteristics are compatible with the types of uses, being that this is located in the urban corridor and the convention regional center area, and it's not going to be materially detrimental to the public health, safety, or welfare of the public. That concludes my presentation. The recommended motion is on the board, and I'm available for questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Very much appreciate it. Do we have a presentation from the applicant?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. My name is Frank Cota. I am a principal in the firm of Greenberg Faro. We're the architects and engineers for the project. First off, I wanted to thank Leah for, I don't know if I can follow that presentation with a better synopsis, but she did a great job. And I'll go through basically everything that was in the staff report in terms of our depictions of the building. There's not much to add to it. There is some renderings that I might get to at the end, but yeah, I'm really here just to ask her any questions that you may have. That said, as Leah pointed out, the red dot is our specific Boston Market existing facility that we're going to convert to the proposed drive-through Starbucks Full Cafe, Third Place, as they like to call it. If you've been following the news, our new CEO, I'm not actually an outside consultant, but the new CEO is big on creating the Third Place. In fact, we had to redesign the interior at the last minute in the last two weeks because it wasn't a big enough cafe. That being said, it will be a nice place. This will also, we will close the existing Starbucks across the street and move over to here, so it's a replacement for that one. Again, the site plan is noted. We will be adding trees along Fire Creek Crossing and Kitsky Lane. We do have some tree removals. It's also covered in the staff report, and we will be complying with the condition regarding that. And again, you can see we expanded the drive-through lane. The other thing of note, if you've been there, there's a bus stop along Kitsky. There's a little path that just goes to the parking lot and stops, so we're going to extend that. Obviously, it gets to our building, and hopefully then people, I did observe when I was there a few times, people just walking willy-nilly across the parking lot to get to the shopping center. I know we can't control people, but at least there's a safe path, at least to our store and over to the drive that crosses, that they can continue on. Again, this is a little bit outdated now. This was the floor plan. We will have a patio outside, as well as the interior café, and then, of course, the back of house and where they serve the coffee, which they call the engine, in case you wanted to know, some Starbucks terms. This is the rebranding of the building. Pretty straightforward, but obviously, we wouldn't want to continue the Boston Market look. And this is the 3D version, looking at the front of that from the corner. We actually are going to, there is, one of the comments from the police department was to remove some of those stones that are easily thrown at people and used as perhaps damaging goods or people or what have you. So we will be redoing the majority of the landscaping around both Fire Creek and Kitsky with not only the trees, but the ground cover to help that. I went back out there today just to make sure. There are some large boulders that I probably will incorporate into the final design. I don't think anybody can lift them up, so there'd be a mixture of, but the goal is to get rid of those nice-sized pebbles or stones you can chuck at someone. Again, another view where that we're going to rebrand, that's the drive-through bump that exists today. We'll reskin it as shown. View of the inside and kind of the before and after proposed and existing. That's really all I have for our presentation. And again, here for questions if needed.
Great. Thanks so much. We'll bring it back to the commissioners, sorry, the commissioners for disclosures. Commissioner Villanueva, please start.
Familiar with the site.
Commissioner Vasari, familiar with the site?
Commissioner Roar Meyer, same.
Commissioner DelVR, familiar with the site?
Commissioner Velto, same disclosures?
Commissioner Dragic, same disclosures?
Commissioner Armstrong, same disclosures. Sorry, we'll now move to public comment. I don't have any request to speak forms. Do we have anyone wishing to speak via Zoom?
Doesn't look like we have anyone raising their hands.
Okay. Do we have anyone in the chambers wishing to speak on this item? Seeing none, I'll close public comment and bring it back to the commission for questions. Commissioner Villanueva?
Thank you. Can we go, sorry, may we have the applicant come up? The materials that were used, they were probably, were they your materials? I just wanted to pull up the maps, because I had a question about the drive-through. I just didn't understand. Okay, so the width is going to happen, or the width, is that already in place? Because I'm looking at these Google Images, and the width of that entry point, is that currently in existence, or that's going to be established?
Where the cars would enter the drive-through?
Yeah.
That is not currently the situation. It actually, you would, today, you would enter, I don't know if, probably, I don't have it close enough.
That's okay. I'm looking at the Google Maps, but so if you want to...
So right now, if you see those accessible spaces, you would go to the, oh, somebody's remote. You would go to the end of that drive, and then you would enter the existing drive-through.
Oh, so it's going to be expanded, lengthened?
Correct, yes.
Okay.
Maybe I can just shed some light. So basically, what's existing right now is where that intersects from two lanes into one.
Okay.
So what they're adding is the two lanes coming off of that, and then that additional landscaping there.
I see. Okay. And the, so where was the part that you said people were concerned about, the "do not block"?
That's up on the Fire Creek Crossing. It's Fire Creek Crossing Road. It's the entryway just to the north of the site.
Oh, okay, so...
So that's a four-way intersection into the shopping center. You'd go right to go to where the current Starbucks is. You go straight up into there. And so what tends to happen, what I've heard during public comment, was that people will pull out trying to turn, and they can't turn, and then they end up blocking the intersection so people can't get through.
Oh, yeah, I can see that happening. Okay.
So just a preventative measure.
And so this would double the, it would go from, you said, 10 cars to how many cars? 15?
So it was about five cars before, and it's going to go to 10 cars now.
Okay. Well, I guess it does, I mean, how do you even enforce that? Because people are just going to line up even...
So we can enforce it through our conditions of approval, and this is one of those things that we look at when we're doing these discretionary reviews for drive-throughs. And, you know, we, of course, consider that certain drive-throughs may have longer lines than other drive-throughs. So we have standards within RMC that require that there be 100 feet of stacking, which at approximately 20 feet of cars, about five feet back from the window where it's ordered, and then 140 feet from where you make your payment. So approximately five cars back, it's essentially doubling that. So it's 10 cars.
Okay. Well, I guess the neighbors would, I mean, that's a commercial center, so if there was, if it was problems, you'd probably hear from it, from the neighbors.
Compared to some other locations that we've seen, even if this does back out, it backs out into the parking lot, and it still wouldn't be blocking the main road or anything like that. And we do appreciate that.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Do we have any other questions from the commission? Commissioner DelVR?
Yeah, so I'm just curious, in terms of some of the traffic studies that were done, like, when do they anticipate the majority of traffic going through the drive-through? Is that...
I don't necessarily have an answer for that off the bat, but I can check and look at what the engineering department wrote down for that.
Okay.
But I'm going to assume that it's probably going to be more in the AM traffic.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Dragic, I don't want to forget you out there on Zoom. Did you have any questions?
No questions at this time. Thank you for thinking of me. Commissioner Armstrong?
Commissioner Vasari?
Sure. Hey, Leah, one for you. Seems like you all got your ducks lined up here. I was just curious if, two parts, if this was actually closer to that residential, would you all be looking at it a little differently, analyzing it a little differently, or raise certain concerns that we would want to keep in mind?
Definitely. So we have Article 14 of Reno Municipal Code, and basically, what that says is it's residential adjacency standards, but they only apply if the actual site is within 300 feet. So even though the site plan review is required for the residential adjacency, the specific residential adjacency standards only apply if you're within 300 feet, essentially.
Okay, gotcha.
So definitely.
Yeah, thank you. And so the existing Starbucks will stay open too, Kitty Corner? I don't know.
My understanding is that that is closing, and this is replacing that one.
Gotcha. And then the last one, and I can see my fellow commissioner to my left might have a follow-up here, but how much coffee is enough?
Well, it depends on who you're talking to. I mean, me, I'm highly caffeinated, so just depends on the day, I guess.
Just a fun question. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Villanueva.
Thanks. I was just going to say, that was, that's a good question to have on the record, like, you know, why we're looking at this differently with the residential being so close. And I think it is, I think that's why it is important to look at these from a very fact-based perspective, because, I mean, yes, the parcel is near residential, but the applicant's project site is obviously not going to be problematic. So good to have on the record. Thank you, Commissioner.
Exactly. And it wouldn't make sense for us to build a six-foot wall, you know, masonry wall there when it's not going to actually mitigate any kind of issue, so.
Any further questions from the commission? Hearing none, we'll move to discussion. Do we have anyone wishing to speak on discussion? Commissioner Velto?
Commissioner Velto, I'm ready to make a motion.
I will entertain a motion.
On the matter of case number LDC 25-00004, Starbucks Fireside Crossing, based upon compliance of the applicable findings, I move to approve the conditional use permit subject to the conditions listed in the staff report, and I can make all the findings.
We have a motion? Do we have a second?
Commissioner Roar Meyer, second?
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Good luck with your project. We will now close item six and move to item seven, training on the roles and responsibilities of the Planning Commission.
Good evening, commissioners. For the record, Angela Fuess, Assistant Director for Development Services. So our goal, kind of starting tonight, is to do regular trainings with the Planning Commission on a series of different topics. So we're going to start with roles and responsibilities. This is kind of planning 101 for what is the role of staff, what is the role of the NAB, what is the role of the Planning Commission, and what is the role of the City Council? So this shouldn't take too long. Big picture, I kind of wanted to walk you through what regulations the Planning Commission looks at. You know, do you look at a building code when you're looking at decisions? Are you looking at zoning codes? And help you understand what the process entails. So not every project comes before Planning Commission. You guys are aware that we do probably about 10,000 building permits a year. Thank goodness, you don't review all 10,000. You would never leave. So there is a separate process for building permits versus what staff reviews versus what Planning Commission reviews. So we're going to go over all of that. At a high level, again, we're talking about land use, there's basically three different documents that kind of cover everything that the Planning Commission gets to see and deal with. At the very highest level, it's our Truckee Meadows Regional Plan. So that's a plan that's adopted by all three agencies. They come together, Reno, Sparks, Washoe County, and come up with really the vision of the region. So they don't set standards to say, "You shall do this," or "You can't do that." They set big-picture policy in terms of, this is where we're going to have industrial areas, or this is where we're going to have our downtown core areas. Below that is, within the City of Reno, our master plan. This is the master plan that I think Ms. Ebert referenced tonight. This plan was adopted back in 2017. I will say, we went through a multi-year process with a consultant and a large stakeholder outreach process to get that adopted plan. The previous master plan was very, very old and antiquated. If any of you had seen it, I mean, it was probably done on a typewriter, it was so old. So this is definitely leaps and bounds, a huge benefit to the city to have that. Not only does it have kind of high-level policy, it also has some great photos and great maps, so it's easy to read and look at. Lot of our technical documents are super boring and dry and technical, but the reimagined Reno plan really tries to set the policy framework for the City of Reno. And then finally, with the things that we deal with the most here at the city in the Planning Department, is our zoning code. So that is a very large document. I think we're up to 660 pages, which is less than what we had with our previous zoning code, so that's a good thing. But it's a big document, covers a lot of very specific rules and regulations. Now, this is the document that pretty much sets the framework for everything we do within the Planning Department. This tells us how many parking spaces are required, how big those parking spaces have to be, how many trees are required, how big those trees have to be. So it is very much a document that has rules and regulations and standards. At a high level, we get a lot of questions about just development in general, so I wanted to kind of walk you through, how does development work? So let's just take an easy example. Let's say Taco Bell wants to come to Reno. They would start by saying, "Okay, is my use allowed? I'm a restaurant, and I want to have a drive-through." So I look at our zoning code, and I figure out what zoning district I'm going to, and then I go to a table and figure out, "Okay, drive-throughs are allowed in that zoning district? Great. Restaurants are allowed in that zoning district? Great." So then I go to next step. How is the site designed? You work with your consultants, your engineers, your planners, your civil engineers, traffic engineers, and they put together a plan of actually how the site itself is going to be designed, especially when we're dealing with things like drive-throughs. We have to look at, well, where are people going to back up? Well, what happens if more than five cars are there? How are we going to account for that? So all of that is taken into consideration, really at that site design stage. And then we get to the building, and that's where the architect comes in and designs the building. The majority of that work is done in coordination with our building department. They're the ones that review the building codes, not within the planning department. So you guys really don't see a lot of those rules and regulations. There's thousands of pages in building codes. Thank goodness we don't have to review that because that is a very technical document. We only have to deal with our 660-page zoning code. Next, then we'll go to the question of, okay, I've designed my site. Now let me figure out if I need an entitlement. Because if you need an entitlement, you either have to go through a 30-day review before I can submit for a building permit, or a longer review. If it's just a conditional use permit, that adds another three months. If I need a zone change first, that adds another four or five months. If I need a master plan amendment first, add another six to seven months. So all of those things are reviewed at that entitlement stage. So you get all those approved. Next up then is you submit for your building permit, get that approved, you build your building, and then you come forward with a business license. And our business license department has all their own rules and regulations on how we regulate businesses. So from a day-to-day perspective, when an entitlement comes in for review, so these are the things that you guys look at, the conditional use permits and the zone changes. Here's kind of a layout of what happens. The application is first submitted. Now, we take city, the city takes applications twice a month. So there's only two times in a month where you can submit. It's essentially every two weeks. So you submits your application. The next step is the city staff routes it around for agency review. We have a list, it's an email list that we send it out to. There's probably, gosh, 20 or 30 different agencies that review it. And that is everything from Tamoa to Washoe County to the Department of Wildlife, to the Fire Department. So they all take a look at it and review it kind of within their purview, things that they're looking at. Next then, we also send out what we call a courtesy notice. This is just a postcard that gets sent out that notifies the neighbors, anyone within 750 feet, that an application has been submitted, gives them a heads up in case they want to review it, tells them when the NAB meeting is going to be scheduled and when the Planning Commission is going to be scheduled. It also gives them a link so that they can go online and review the application material. So that, that's kind of a unique process to us. Not all jurisdictions do that. That is not required by state law. Again, it's a courtesy notice, so that's just something our council had to start to implement probably four, five years ago. So it gives us an additional round of public review. Once we get through that, we work with the applicant, we work with all of the agencies that reviewed it. We listen to their comments and their concerns. We also have this go to the NAB, where the NAB provides comments. And then the staff works with the applicant. And we have, we put together a list of things that we have concerns with, things that we want changed. Now, this is a, a step that I don't know that all of Planning Commission understands. This whole process, before it even gets to Planning Commission, typically is a two-to-three-month process. I think most people think, oh, we just take in an application, write a staff report, boom, done, stamped, good to go. No. There is a lot of review and there is a lot of changes that go through that process. We have projects that take months to get through rounds of reviews, multiple rounds of reviews. So it is definitely not a rubber stamp. We spend a lot of time researching, what does the code say? Does it make sense here? How are we dealing with things like residential adjacency? Does that meet the intent? And so there's a lot of back and forth between city staff and the applicant to revise the plan to get to the point where we actually write a staff report. In that staff report, we also list out conditions of approval. So these are things that are above and beyond what you would see if you just submitted a building permit. And this kind of gives you guys a little bit more flexibility to say, hmm, okay, I think we should also add 10 more parking spaces for these reasons. Or I think you should put in some more trees over in this area. And those conditions of approval, again, are specific to that site. So if the ownership changes, those conditions still stand. It doesn't matter who submitted it. At the end of the day, it lives with that land. Once that staff report's written, conditions of approval are written, it then goes to Planning Commission. So understand, there is a lot of, of work that goes into any application that comes before this group. We, we've had questions in the past of, well, who else reviews and provides comments? Like I mentioned before, we send it out to probably 20 to 30 different agencies. A lot of times, agencies don't respond because they don't have an impact. The airport typically only responds if it's something in the flight path or something that's going to be a tall building, right? Those are the things they're concerned about. The Indian Colony typically would only respond with something in writing if it's something adjacent to or close to land that they owned. The School District typically only responds if it's a residential development. They're worried about number of students and so they review it if there's kids involved. They also review schools that are not Washoe County School District, that are privately owned, and they provide feedback to that as well. So again, this is just a tiny little snapshot of a couple of the different agencies. But know that it goes out to a ton of different people that have the opportunity to, to provide feedback and comment. So let's talk about the role of the NAB. A lot of people think that the NAB actually makes a vote, a recommendation of approval or denial. They do not. The NAB only gets to provide comments, they get to provide feedback. Now, the, the great thing about the NAB, it is, it's also a community forum. So the NAB meets once a month. Development projects get scheduled. Different from Planning Commission, when we have NABs, it's the applicant that takes the lead on presenting. At this point in the process, staff has not done a deep dive and has not done a thorough review. So staff is there to answer questions like, well, when does this go to Planning Commission? And, you know, how many parking spaces do you require? So they, staff's there to answer questions, but it's not specific to, hey, here's a deep dive and here's the conditions we've come up with. What do you guys think? It literally is super high-level, a chance for the neighbors and anyone that wants to attend that NAB to see what the project is and to ask questions. And then, once we get through that, again, the role of the Planning Commission, very different. So you guys serve as an advisory board, pretty much on anything related to planning and development. Couple of things that you guys are responsible for. Land use decisions, making sure that it's consistent with our zoning code and our master plan. So you may think, wow, if we're making these decisions, shouldn't we be subject matter experts on your zoning code and your master plan? No. You are not required to actually do a deep dive of our zoning code or our master plan. Highly encourage you to at least be familiar with what's in it so that you can better understand your role. But you, you don't have to be a subject matter expert to sit on this commission. You know, you may sell life insurance. And you think, well, why are people selling life insurance, sitting on the Planning Commission? Why are they making land use decisions? Because you represent the community as well, right? We have staff that is supposed to serve as the subject matter expert. You guys serve at a higher level, really just advising and to see if it makes sense. The other benefit of a Planning Commission is it really provides that additional public forum. So anyone that wants to provide feedback, maybe they weren't able to go to the NAB or they didn't know about it, they can always come to Planning Commission and provide feedback. And that helps to kind of formulate your guys' decisions. Now, for the most part, decisions that come to you stop at you. If it's a conditional use permit, it stops here. If it's a tentative map, stops here. Major site plan review, stops here. And there's a number of other types of applications that only go to council. They don't come before you. And there's a number of different applications that you guys just make a recommendation to council, but they always go to council. So let's talk a little bit more about that. City Council. Now, they are the ones who are tasked with all of the policy direction. You know, if, if we have a new policy that says, from now on, we want a fire station located four minutes from every single parcel in the city of Reno. They set that policy decision. They also adopt the budget. So anything that requires changes to our staffing, changes to how we process things, requires City Council decisions. The challenge I think we find a lot of times is when we have a project like Live Entertainment. You guys had a case recently where there was a conditional use permit, they wanted to have music at night. We, we've had complaints from our downtown residents of, why aren't we enforcing noise? I will tell you, we don't pay code enforcement to work at night. We only pay code enforcement to work during the day. Now, it's a City Council decision, if they want to start changing the budget, augmenting our budget, to have our code enforcement team go out at night and enforce night noise. So the challenge is you guys get to make land use decisions to say, yep, we want somebody to look at night noise and, and activities. But from a budgetary perspective, council has to make those decisions. Couple of different types of applications that you guys don't ever see and that only go to council. One would be an annexation. So that's basically saying, these are the parcels that we want the city to now, to be a part of the city. From a financial perspective, anything that's annexed, we now have to provide police service and fire service. So there's a huge financial decision anytime we annex land. If it's not within the city, it is not our responsibility. When 911 gets called, not our problem. But once it's annexed, it becomes our financial responsibility. The other thing is, again, they, they, they serve a different role, right? They are elected, you guys are appointed. So their, their, their decision-making, oftentimes, they have to weigh to the decisions of their constituents, where, again, you guys are more of a land use decision group. Now, the big thing, anytime you guys make a decision, is the, goes back to the findings. And every different type of application has different findings. But generally speaking, they cover the same things, right? Is this use compatible? Does this proposed project follow our development standards? Do we have public services and facilities? Is there sewer lines, water lines, police and fire? Are they readily available? And the last one is, is this project detrimental to the public health, safety, and welfare? Now, there's a fine line between saying, well, they don't have sewer service today because it's vacant. So I'm going to deny this project because there's no sewer line there today. No, there's, there's no sewer line to any project that's vacant. The, the thing we have to look at is, do they have the ability to serve and put in sewer lines? Traffic's probably one of the more challenging ones. So I know we had a case recently where Commissioner Becerra brought up concerns about traffic. Now, I would suggest anytime you bring up concerns and are recommending approval or denial, make sure you tie it back to the findings of the case. You may say, hmm, I just disagree with the traffic study. I feel that maybe they didn't do it correctly or it's not accurate, they're not addressing their concerns. That would be more of an "I feel" comment. Those comments get us into trouble. So I suggest you don't use the "I feel" type comments when making decisions. You tie it back to something concrete to say, based on the traffic study, it shows that this project will generate a level of F, of level of service F, meaning below where we are, we are comfortable serving. Now, just because it's level F doesn't mean you have to deny it. The question is, are they mitigating their impacts? So it may, the traffic study may show, hey, with this project, there's going to be traffic concerns. Have they done things to actually address traffic? Are they putting in traffic lights? Are they putting in acceleration lanes or turning lanes? Those are the kind of things you should bring your findings back to. So again, encourage you to, whether you're approving a project or denying a project or offering up different conditions, make sure that you take the emotion, the feeling out of it and go back to the, the basis of facts and findings to say, what can I tie it to in this? That again, if we get sued, we can back it up to say, here is the reason why Planning Commission chose to approve it or to deny it. So let's talk about a couple of other things. Just raise your hand if you agree. Does the, the way a project is financed matter? Should we be asking, well, how are you getting funding? Who's paying for this? What bank are you using? No, we cannot be asking those questions, it means nothing. What about, I just, I just want to know, like, what else are you going to do? Why are you doing this? You know, where did the vision come from? Does that matter? No, vision does not matter. And I will tell you, all the pictures up here were somebody's really cool vision that we approved, that went nowhere. The challenge we continue to run into, whether we're talking to planners or talking to development teams that come in with great ideas every day and talk to staff about what they want to do, or they go to Planning Commission with these cool projects, great pictures, or they go to City Council. There is no requirement that they actually have to build them, right? They get an entitlement, that entitlement expires at some point. Half the time, most of the projects we see anymore never turn out to be these cool ideas. And, and, and there's, there's reasons for that. So some of them may just have, you know, grandiose ideas, but they didn't really think about the cost to build it. Other ones, the, the market conditions have drastically changed. You know, a lot of these projects that were in our downtown were prior to the major recession back in 2007, 2008. And so there, there was a lot happening, there was a lot of money being financed everywhere, and then the world crashed financially and all of these projects were halted and stopped. I think the, the challenge too is labor, workforce, the cost of construction. You know, one day, the cost of construction could double from what you had planned in your performa from six months ago. We look at everything from timber to concrete. One thing I don't think we realize too is anytime some big projects are coming to Reno and being built, like schools, we have a couple of new schools being built, that sucks the labor force out of the construction market. So if you were trying to build something, at the same time, we have three major schools being built, now the cost for you to develop your little project has probably tripled because the labor force is now going to other projects and they're going to charge you a lot more than they did before when they didn't have as much going on. So, so many of these things are out of everybody's control. And so when we ask, you know, show me what your vision, what are you doing? I, I would just caution you that, we, we always get disappointed. And another great example is when we look at zone changes, you shouldn't be asking, what project are you going to build with it? A lot of times, developers will come, I'm going to do a zone change from commercial to industrial. And I'm going to build this really cool industrial project. Here's my pretty pictures. I'm thinking we're going to have like yogurt beach there, 24-hour fitness there, right? Like, okay, the neighborhood gets involved. And the neighborhood gets excited and says, I would love to have yogurt beach and 24-hour fitness in my neighborhood. So the zone change is approved. Guess what? Things changed. Maybe the developer couldn't make it pencil anymore, he sold it. It is forever now zoned industrial, so anybody can come in now and build industrial. Nine times out of 10, they're not building the yogurt beach and the 24-hour fitness. They're probably building a big industrial warehouse that operates 24 hours a day with bright lights and trucks. It's not all those neighbors that said, well, I supported the zone change because you told me I was going to get a yogurt beach. No, at a zone change, we cannot condition, we cannot require anything. All they get is a yes or no vote. So again, be cautious when you ask for, show me what you plan to do on that site. Because most of the time, we're going to be disappointed and the neighbors are going to be even more disappointed when they were told one thing and they didn't get it. All right. Finally, just know that the decisions you make do have impacts. I wanted to bring up a couple of recent court case decisions, and this is specific to court case decisions in Nevada that had huge financial impacts. Two of them are in the, in the southern Nevada portion, Red Rock versus Clark County. This was a project that went on for 20 years. There were some old mines that had been, hadn't been used as mines anymore and a developer came in, again, this was more than 20 years ago, and wanted to put in, I think, 5,000 homes. So they had this big vision, a ton of pushback from a number of different bodies in the public that, that opposed it. At the end of the day, the project was denied, it went through multiple rounds of lawsuits. The courts found in favor of the developer at a price tag of $80 million. Lot of things happened with that case. Now, the challenge with that is that Clark County is on the hook for $80 million. Well, don't they have insurance for that? No, you don't have insurance for that. They have to come up with that money on their own. So how are they going to fund it? Instead of funding some of their capital improvement projects, like, huh, maybe they needed to build a new fire station? Nope, that money has to be put on hold and has to be, instead, contributed to that Red Rock development project. So be, be cautious that anything we do, whether it is our council members or our Planning Commission, there are repercussions. There's another one that is against the city of Las Vegas, IED Land Company. This had to do with a golf course. At one time, it was a golf course, then converted and a developer came in and said he wanted to build housing on it. There was some disagreement of, does the zoning take precedence or does the master plan take precedence? Again, after a lot of court battles, at the end of the day, I think it was about a $48 million lawsuit that was against the city of Las Vegas. More recently, Stan Lucas in the city of Reno, this was a project in the North Verde area, just west of Somerset. There was a long history 20 years ago of a lawsuit where kind of the land use went through a lawsuit and it was determined that generally in this area, those two parcels there, that's that bottom map, they could have 630-some parcels. That was decided, again, at a high-level zoning level. That was approved through the courts. Took them 20 years to come forward, but they came forward with a tentative map. Planning Commission recommended denial of the tentative map. City Council recommended denial of the tentative map. The applicant sued and the court said, go back and vote again. Make sure your basis, your reason for approving or denying this is based on something tied to the findings. Went back to council, they denied it again, went back to the courts. Courts found in favor of the project. Courts found in favor of the project. So the project was approved. Then they sued the city for damages. The city ended it by paying them $3.5 million. Again, we don't have insurance to cover us for these lawsuits. That comes out of our general fund. So instead of nice, pretty things and fun things, now we have to pay a developer $3.5 million. So just be extra careful when you make decisions. Always tie it to the findings. I don't care if you're approving it, or denying it, or adding conditions, make sure you can state a reason why that doesn't include how it makes you feel. Put something in there that's concrete. All right. So that is all I have for you today. Any questions from the group?
Thank you. We'll bring it back to the commission. Do you have any questions from commissioners? Commissioner Romeyer.
I guess I had questions. Thank you for the presentation. I have questions about non-project decision-making. So when there's code cleanups, or when there's a master plan that's ready for adoption, those don't come with findings.
Nope.
So what is the ration, do we need a rationale for something like that, that we need to for kind of a de-risking decision-making?
So you're saying, we're doing some code cleanup now. Let's say we're making some changes on setbacks. Nope. And that goes back to, you know, does it make sense? Code cleanups are incredibly difficult because they're not black and white. Every jurisdiction has their own set of zoning codes. And something as simple as how wide a parking space should be. Our rules for parking spaces differ from Washoe County, differ from Sedia Sparks. You'd think that would be something that consistently, we would all have the same-sized parking stalls, but we don't. So there is flexibility there. I will say, we do a lot of things in our zoning code that over the last 20 years have been adopted that most jurisdictions don't do. So we have a lot of uniqueness to ours. At the end of the day, you guys make a recommendation. That goes to council, so they ultimately make that decision.
Any further questions? Commissioner Veltar.
Just a comment. This has been my favorite training you've done so far, so thank you for presenting for us tonight.
Oh, good.
Thank you, Commissioner Draculich. Don't want to forget about you virtually.
Thanks, buddy. Commissioner Veltar nailed it. That was awesome. Thank you, Ms. Fuz.
You're welcome. Thanks for staying awake.
Yeah, thank you for presenting. That was great. Appreciate it.
Great.
Yeah, I think we're basically in discussion. This one, do you have any further discussion items? Commissioner Becerra?
Yeah, thank you so much, everyone. One question, is there a project, like, not like a small project, the standard storage units or, you know, those size projects, but something of regional significance level that you feel this body can look back to, that you can point us to and say, you know, that one was, that's a model project where it was evaluated by staff, the commission, all the way up, and that's one that, you know, we should kind of use as a model for how things are done. I know each project's unique, but you know.
I think they're all done perfectly.
Mm-hmm.
No, I will add, the thing I think even the general public doesn't realize about projects of regional significance, we all look at those projects for different reasons. At the local level, the, you know, Reno Sparks, Washoe County, let's say it's a conditional use permit, we're looking at the details of, is it compatible with the neighborhood? You know, how have you mitigated the traffic impacts? Does it meet how tall a building can be in that zoning district? Now, when you get to regional, they don't look at any of that. They have no control over our zoning regulations. They have no control over traffic and where traffic light should go. So they're looking at it for very different reasons, which makes it tough, because in a way, we've almost already vetted that decision when we've looked at it from, you know, a super detailed level. By the time it gets to regional, if we've missed something that regional's looking at, we probably missed the boat on like, oops, how did we miss that? You know, regional looks at things like, is it in the development constraints area? Meaning, we have a map that shows where slopes are more than 30% steep, it's a playa, it's a wetland, all of that, we would look at just to know if, you know, are you putting a building in a wetland? Are you putting a building in a playa? But regional looks at it from a very different level. So they don't look at it to the same minutia that we do. And we actually, we include regional early on in those projects to say, can you just do a super high level? Have we missed anything? So before it even gets to planning commission, regional has taken a look and provided a quick analysis to say, yep, this will trigger project of regional significance, you're good to go, keep processing. So I think from a process point of view, it's been set up in a good way. By the time you get to regional, if they have found something that we somehow missed in our review, again, I'd say some major fatal flaws and that we missed something at the staff level. But typically, by the time it gets to regional, everything's already been vetted. The zoning's in place, you know, the master plan's been approved. So we're looking at it for kind of very different, different levels.
Okay, great. Thank you. And just a follow-up.
Sure.
I'm just a little confused by the vision comment. And so I just want to kind of find reconciliation there from past expectations that were perhaps set. Before, not too long ago, the presentation order was changed, so staff would go first, and then applicant would follow. And I believe it was communicated that they would focus on kind of a larger picture vision and not be redundant, if you will, of staff's presentation. But it sounds like what you're saying is that they really shouldn't focus on that because we're not evaluating that. And so I'm curious, what should we be looking for between these two presentations if they're meant to be the same, if not vision?
I think the one thing that the applicant can provide is the why. They may say, we chose to put in, you know, on the Starbucks example, right now Starbucks has enough queuing for five cars, and that probably met our code standard at the time. Now, a new Starbucks is going in, and they want to have queuing for 10 cars, and they've designed it in a way that has, you know, the kind of the V shape. That was their decision to do that. So the question for them is like, why did you choose to do that versus maybe the way that Starbucks has traditionally had their drive-throughs? I think the applicant provides that level of detail because they're the ones coming up with the site plan versus city staff, we're the ones reviewing it and saying, does it meet code? And the challenge when you ask the vision is, again, it's almost fake news, because they all come up with this great way to sell you on why you should vote yes. You're not buying a car. The question is, does it meet the code, yes or no? Have you mitigated the impacts, yes or no? That's what planning commission should be looking at. Oftentimes, the vision is sold as this pretty picture, and they come up with all these things that they say they want to do or they're going to do, but unless it's conditioned as a requirement, they're not going to do it. There's nothing requiring them to do it. And so you have just been sold a vision, but there is no teeth to make them do it. And again, from the neighborhood perspective, we see this all the time. The neighbors are told one thing, and it doesn't get built to look like that or function that way. So we really try and focus on the practicality of, don't sell me a used car. Sell me the project and tell me why you're building it that way.
Okay. And do applicants know that? Because sometimes it feels like, at least for the last while now, that staff presents, you know, knocks it out of the park, if you will, and applicants like, can't follow that show, and we're just going to kind of tap out here. And I feel like maybe it's a missed opportunity for them to really focus on the why they're doing something. And so maybe my question is, are they getting communicated what the expectation of their presentation's supposed to be to us?
And we can have that again. Every jurisdiction does it slightly different, right? Every jurisdiction gives the ability for staff to get up and the applicant to get up. This is universal across the whole country. Again, we encourage our applicants to provide a presentation because they can provide a lot of feedback in terms of some of the questions you ask, but their job is not to sell you a project. Different applicants have different presentation styles. That's on them. There's no rules on what they have to do. They don't even have to present if they don't want to. It's definitely, we encourage them to present because if questions come up that our staff isn't privy to the answers, you know, they should have those answers.
Great. Thank you.
Commissioner Villanueva.
Thank you. Thanks again. That was a great presentation. I really appreciated the flow chart of kind of all the things that the application has to go through. It does get very, I guess, nuanced with our role because it does, the applicants do go through a long process. And then we'll get, we'll get applications like the one we got a few weeks ago with the sound, or with the music until 2:00 AM or 3:00 AM, or whatever it was. That went through seven different entities, agencies, things like that. And then it comes in front of us, and then it is a determination, well, let's look at the character of the community, let's look at, you know, let's really look at the findings. And then we also have to be a voice for the community, and we kind of do play that additional role that maybe some of the other seven agencies or folks haven't really focused on. So I think it's important to highlight that. I just want to highlight that for the, for the commission. But yeah, this was really helpful. Thank you.
Great.
Any further questions or comments from the commission?
Seeing none. Before we close this on, I'd just like to say thank you for the presentation. I found it very helpful. I think I can speak for myself, when I joined, the commission was composed differently. I think it had a lot of experience, and frankly, I've only been on almost two years since then, and it's changed quite a lot. And, you know, you have folks term out that are very knowledgeable, and we're a pretty young board, I think is a fair way to characterize it, for the most part. We do have some folks here that are really experienced, who have been here for a while. But this presentation, I think, is really important, and it'll be helpful to us going forward. So I look forward to your following presentations, and thanks again to staff for taking the time to sort of put this together and let us engage in this dialogue with you. Really appreciate it.
Great. Thank you much.
Sorry, one more thing, Chair.
Sure.
Can we make that available on the website? Is that available?
With like, not the self-help, but the, somewhere on the website, the city of Reno's website, maybe like in the planning section?
We can. I think for the general public, they all have access to all of the staff reports and presentations. Kind of helps that they can go back at any time, just pull up the date and pull up the presentation.
What about just the general public? Like, folks come in and visit the commission for the first time, maybe they got a notice, they don't really understand the process. I think this would be really helpful to have on the website. I'll leave that to you, but just something to add. Thanks.
Yeah, absolutely. And we have done kind of some, just so you know, too, similar-type trainings with the NABs. I think we have, it's probably been a year and a half since we've done it. There's definitely a lot of rotation on the NAB boards. And so once we get some new NAB members, probably in January, February, we'll be going back out to the NABs and giving them a similar presentation. I think they struggle too with, you know, what's our role? If we're not voting on projects, what's the purpose of the NAB? But again, they serve a, definitely an important role in getting the information out to the neighborhood, so we'll do a similar-type presentation to them. Okay, thanks, everyone.
Thank you, Angela. We will close item seven and move to item eight, Truckee Meadows Regional Planning Liaison I can present it? I don't know if it's okay for Chair? Fine for Chair? Okay, great. So we actually had a pretty eventful regional planning commission meeting last week. We had three items. First was consideration and possible adoption of the 2024 Washoe County census forecast. That was approved unanimously, just at a high level. Staff basically walked us through how they think about census forecasting, just into the future, different data sets that they use. It was actually really informative. I recommend people check it out. I think they actually put it on the TMRPA website. So it's a great resource. Second item was an RPC training segment on projects of regional significance as defined in NRS, just kind of high-level training for the RPC. RPC actually does have a training requirement for its members, so that was eligible for ours towards our training requirement that we had to meet, and generally informative. That has also had a fair amount of turnover and transition, so I thought it was good time to kind of go through these high-level trainings. And then the last item we covered was a status update on projects of significant, regional, sorry, projects of regional significance as it relates to Washoe County School District and charter schools. And it was basically a presentation of the history of regional planning concerns and objectives regarding the schools, possible direction of staff is basically conducting further research and analytics, coordinating with the governing board, regional planning commission, Washoe County School District, charter and private school stakeholders. The short version of that is, we agreed to proceed with further research, but more importantly, having kind of a stakeholder meeting with all of those agencies and stakeholders to try and work through that issue and determine whether or not schools in general, charter schools, et cetera, should have a project of regional significance designation and tax to them past a certain threshold, with a goal of kind of coming up with a plan by the end of the year that we can present and move forward towards a decision. So those were the main highlights from the regional planning commission last week, and we will close item eight and move to item nine, staff announcements.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. For the record, Mike Reilly, planning manager. As far as a report on planning division projects, I've had several commissioners ask me if we're seeing any kind of an increase in activity within the planning department. I will say, as of within the last few weeks, we've seen a significant uptick in requests for pre-application meetings. And a pre-application meeting is a service that we offer at Development Services. Every Monday, we hold meetings. It's a chance for somebody to bring forward a project and get input from not only planning, but engineering, public works, utility services, environmental services. So there's somebody there from all those departments to provide input. Now, not all those projects that come forward will make it to this commission, depending on what entitlements are required or what type of project. But generally speaking, it's a precursor for what we expect to see. We've had such an uptick that we're actually increasing our time slots to accommodate those. So we anticipate that we will see a fairly significant increase in the number of applications being submitted. So that's just kind of a quick update. As far as council updates, the Canyons PUD, the second reading of that ordinance was approved on September 19th by the city council, and the Cavalry Chapel Zone Change, which you recently heard that will go to council on the 23rd of October. And that's all I have for this evening.
Great. Thank you. We will close item nine, move to item 10, Commissioners' Suggestions for Future Agenda Items. Do any commissioners have suggestions? Commissioner Villanueva?
Yeah, I've asked for it before, so I just don't know if it's appropriate or not because it hasn't been presented. So maybe it doesn't matter if we hear it, but I do want to hear about the plan for the river. It may, I mean, I understand that it may not happen, and maybe it's not appropriate for us to hear it, but it would be, it would be nice to have that information. So that's something you guys think you can, I know you guys are busy.
As that plan is evolving, we want to make sure that we've got kind of the ladies and grace, so we are courting that in terms of, we will have a presentation coming back.
Okay, thank you.
Any other recommendations or suggestions? Seeing none, we'll close item 10, move to item 11, Public Comment. This item is for either Public Comment on any action item or for any general public comment. Do you have anyone wishing to speak on Zoom?
We do not have anyone on Zoom, no.